I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise. We could have a moment of silence to keep our troops in our prayers, that they're away for the holidays and our law enforcement make sure that everybody comes home safe. Thank you. Dennis, the pledge?
The pledge of freedom, liberty, and justice for all. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been compiled with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Valente.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Polos. Freeholder Tamara.
Here.
Freeholder Valente.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. You have some recognitions?
Yes, recognizing the Port Reading Saints Cheerleaders and declaring December 21st, 2015 as Homeless Persons Memorial Day in Middlesex County.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Well, we have our cheerleaders here from Port Reading Saints and it's really great that they were able to travel to Orlando and among many, many teams that they participated. So let me make this presentation to the girls. Maybe after we have the presentation, maybe the girls could do a little cheer for us.
Yeah.
Director, I would love to get one of those bows.
We could arrange that, I think. But the Pee-wee team from the Port Reading Saints Cheerleaders, they're girls aging from 10 to 12 years old. They're first-place Central Jersey champs and they were 2015 Eastern Region champs, which advanced them to the Nationals and Disney World. And that was a great accomplishment. And then they go to Disney World and they came in second place out of 366 teams. Out of 366 teams, they had the 13th highest score for the entire week. So that's really something that you girls should be very proud of and I want to say thank you to all of you for making us proud here in Middlesex County, but also thank you to your parents that make you go back and forth, take you, pick you up from school, go to practice. I know because my daughter was at, my both daughters were cheerleaders and it's a lot of work and energy. But also the coaches who dedicate a lot of time, who don't get paid and it's really a labor of love for everybody involved. So on behalf of the Board of Freeholders, I want to congratulate you on your achievement here. So if you want to come up, we have resolutions for every one of you, plus the coaches. Come on, girls. We'll take a photo up here, alright? Right here, girls. There you go.
This is where you have to do your cheer, okay? Yeah?
You all cheering.
For TV. You're gonna be on TV.
Yeah? You're welcome. Okay. Here's the whole coach area. Where's the coaches? Alright, come on up. Sit here, let's stand here in the middle between these girls. I'll stand behind you guys. Okay, how's that? The coaches.
Please, guys. By the way, if you're coming, come on in.
There you go.
Now where's the cheer?
Okay?
Where's the cheer, Director?
Alright, girls, it's your show.
We're gonna do the cheer.
Girls, girls, cheer, cheer.
Hello, cheer.
Oh, I'm so like that. My grace. I thought, oh.
We'll give the resolutions.
What happened?
Oh, oh.
Now face the camera.
Now face the camera. Alright. On three. On three. One. One, two, three.
Oh, come on. What are you doing now?
Why not?
Yeah.
Wait.
Hurry up.
Can I call it? Let's rock hard! Take the war back! Believe it, that's right! Rocking the court, it's flip gold light! The heart of Port Reading, take fans up round! Yell P-R-S, shout it loud! P-R-S, P-R-S, come on! P-R-S, P-R-S! Keep it up there, ready? We're here for a fight! Show them who you are, yell flip gold light! Flip gold light! Flip gold light! You know it, flip gold light! Port Reading, let's hear it! Put on the show! Yell for the team and the colors, you know! P-R-S, flip gold light! P-R-S, flip gold light! The legend is true! You know who we are! P-R-S, rock star! Out.
Very good. Very good, ladies. We'll take a two-minute recess because I don't think you're all gonna want to stay here and listen to our meeting. So we'll... Okay, correspondence?
Each freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the Clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the Clerk of the Board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Reports of freeholders. Freeholder Ken Armwood.
I have no official report other than to say to everyone to please have a happy holiday, whatever you celebrate and whatever the emphasis is, make sure that you're good to other people. Happy holidays.
Freeholder Carol Valente.
Thank you, Director. I'm happy to announce Middlesex County is number one for recycling in the state. The New Jersey DEP recently released the 2013 recycling rates for New Jersey counties. Middlesex County was number one in the state, attaining a total recycling rate of 71 percent. This also is the highest rate ever reached by the county. Our county residents and businesses recycled over 1.8 million tons of materials. The 2013 numbers are the latest figures available. Recycling rates are calculated by the New Jersey DEP utilizing recycling numbers submitted by each municipality and comparing those numbers to waste disposal amounts reported by the solid waste facilities in and out of the county. Our municipal recycling coordinators, with assistance from the Division of Solid Waste Management Staff, spend much time and effort gathering the numbers each year for these reports. I'd like to thank our partners at the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, which operates curbside recycling collection in more than a dozen of our towns. This is a great achievement, but it would not be possible without the dedication to recycling shown by our residents and businesses. So thank you all for your efforts and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Valente. Freeholder Charlie Kenny.
Thank you, Director. I'm gonna borrow Freeholder Armwood's report. I'm gonna wish everybody a happy holiday, whether it's one that you just celebrated or about to celebrate, and also a happy and healthy new year to everyone. And as he said, it's not, you know, it's not about getting the biggest gift, the most expensive gift, the brightest gift. It's about the gift that comes from the heart. So if you have a chance, help out your local food banks, help out your local Toys for Tots, whatever the case may be. Just give something from the heart that's gonna touch a person more than you could ever imagine. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Charlie Tamara.
Okay. Last call for Joseph in Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat at the State Theater in New Brunswick. This year, there are four performances, both 2:00 and 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, December 26th and Sunday, December 27th. Tickets are currently on sale at the State Theater box or by calling the ticket line, so I urge you to act fast because at only $7 per ticket, they will sell out quickly. Please take this opportunity during the hustle and bustle of the season to relax with your family and friends and enjoy the magical show. Last week, our very own Roosevelt Park Family Ice Skating Rink was featured on News Channel 4 highlighting the public's interest in winter activities during some most recent unseasonably mild weather. For Middlesex County, this isn't a problem. We are making ice and seeing record numbers of residents enjoying the rink for parties, taking lessons from our instructors out there and having just, and having fun. Roosevelt Park Family Ice Skating Rink is currently open and is packed with full of children and adults. For more information about session times, lessons, and items available at the rink, go to the Middlesex County website in the section of Further Office in Parks and Recreation or call Tracy Reed at 732-494-3785. I too also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and if you can't donate to a food pantry, go volunteer at one. And I also want to say, go Giants, and I haven't said that in four years. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder Tamara. Freeholder Blanquita Valente.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. Tonight, I have two items to share from our Office of Aging and Disabled Services. Each year, the Office of Aging and Disabled Services provides a day of holiday shopping for persons with disabilities at the Brunswick Square Mall in East Brunswick. The day involves wheelchair-accessible transportation as well as staff and volunteers who assist individuals in making their purchases and navigating through the mall. This year's event featured an art project facilitated by Scott Friedman from Rutgers University that assisted participants in making beautiful cards for friends and family. The holiday shopping day is also an opportunity for participants to learn about services offered by the County Office of Aging and Disabled Services. Many individuals sell to us. This is the only time during the year they're able to get out and buy items they also need for themselves. Our thanks to Brunswick Square Mall, Scott Friedman, and the staff and volunteers who participated. I would also like to remind residents covered by Medicare that the Medicare Advantage disenrollment period will begin January 1st, 2016 and end on February 14th, 2016. During this time, people enroll in a Medicare Advantage plan, have the opportunity to leave their Advantage plan and switch to original Medicare. People who make this change also have until February 14th to join a Medicare prescription drug plan to add drug coverage. Coverage will begin the first day of the month after the plan receives your enrollment form. I encourage anyone with questions regarding Medicare to contact the County State Health Insurance Program or CHIP to speak with a trained counselor. This free service provides unbiased information to allow you to make informed decisions about Medicare as well as to resolve any questions or issues you may have. You can contact CHIP by calling our Office of Aging and Disabled Services at 732-745-3295. And I also want to join my fellow freeholders in wishing everyone a very wonderful holiday. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and a lot of good health. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Valente. I would like to make a few comments. Tomorrow, December 18th, at 11:00 a.m., Assemblyman John Waznewski in cooperation and partnership with our Fire Marshal Mike Gallagher, New Jersey State FBA President Ed Donnelly, myself, and whoever else wants to join in, it will be a demonstration of a Christmas tree fire. How easy, easily it is for a tree to light up on fire and it's more about awareness and letting everyone know to be careful during the holidays. I also would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and a healthy new year, a prosperous new year, but most important, good health to everyone. I want to wish my, our employees a very happy holiday as well because I can say proudly that we have the best employees in the land besides having the greatest county in the land because our employees give 200 percent and they make our job a lot easier throughout the year. Okay. Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
Yes, Freeholder Director. Resolution 15-2215-R, as per our reference on Monday evening, is to be voided.
At this time, I'd like to open a meeting up to public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name for the record and you have five minutes.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Charles Cradaville. I'm from New Brunswick. Just want to ask real, real quick first, the demonstration tomorrow, the Christmas tree fire, what is the location?
Fire Academy.
Okay, thank you. And you said 11:30 a.m.?
11:00.
11:00, okay. I just want to ask about one resolution, but first I need to know, does the board have copies of the resolutions themselves or just the agenda?
We have the listed agenda right here.
Both are available, though.
That's correct.
Each of the numbers are just the...
Okay. So 15-2186-R, I'm talking about a resolution on page nine. Has the board reviewed that resolution? Has the, has the board seen the resolution?
2189?
2186.
The grant agreements.
Oh. Yes, yes.
Okay. And why can't the public have a copy of the resolution?
You can always call up Mr. Cradaville and ask for a copy and you can, we can get you a copy.
Okay. Can you ask the clerk of the board if I emailed and asked for a copy this week?
Absolutely.
I, I'm, can you ask her if I made that request? Because I did. I already requested the...
They, the resolutions are available to the public when they are enacted. The resolution is not enacted until an action is taken this evening.
Okay.
So you make your request, assuming the resolution is approved, you're entitled to it.
Okay. And so when it says approve the Arts Trust Fund grant agreements, are those documents available to the public?
They are available once the resolution is, is approved and the agreements are executed.
Okay. Have the freeholders seen the agreements?
Yes, they have.
Okay. And can you tell me the nature of the agreements? All, all we've heard so far is it's $6 million per project over five years. Is that the nature of the agreements?
There were presentations made by the different municipalities in reference to the projects that they were gonna do within their own municipality.
So how many millions of dollars?
Each municipality will get $6 million and it's a structure of $2 million a year.
$2 million this year and then two next and then two...
To clarify it, there are three grants that were approved. Two of them provide for $2 million a year over three years. The third is for $1 million for the first three years and $2 million, $3 million for the last year.
Which one is that that's different than the other two?
Township of Woodbridge.
Woodbridge. So Woodbridge is getting $1 million, $1 million, and then $3 million.
The same $6 million, but over a longer period.
Right. And can you tell me, is there an anticipated completion date for the Woodbridge project?
You'd have to go back and look at the presentation that was made. I don't, I don't know.
I don't recall exactly when the completion date is, but it's in the presentation that they gave to us.
Is it in this decade?
Is it in this decade?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it is, yeah.
The project will be opened before the end of the decade?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I just note presently, it's a contaminated site. So remediation takes time. I don't understand why the project would be getting millions of dollars when it's a contaminated site and you don't have anybody to run any type of performance space there. Is there an organization that would operate the facility? The arts component?
Mr. Cradaville, let me ask you. This resolution deals with approving the form of agreement. It's not with regard to approving the grant. The grants were approved at a previous meeting after presentations were made by the municipalities. So I think your question, it goes beyond the question related specifically to the resolution approving the agreements.
Okay. Can you tell me, is there, is there any type of body, a council or advisors that are involved in this Arts Trust Fund? Who makes the decisions? Is there an advisory body?
Your question is beyond, once again, the nature of this particular resolution.
Okay. So you're about to give out $18 million and I'm asking, was there an advisory committee?
The resolution says, the, this is the grant fund agreements, the language for the grant fund agreements for Woodbridge, New Brunswick, and Carteret.
For the record, the Freeholder Board is refusing to answer whether or not there's an advisory committee that's involved with the Arts Trust Fund.
For the record, Mr. Cradaville, the language of the agreements is the resolution.
Is it not relevant if there's an advisory committee? Is it relevant to this $18 million you're about to spend?
One has nothing to do with the other.
Time, time.
Really?
Time is up.
It doesn't matter if there's an advisory committee because you make the decisions.
Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, address, and you have five minutes.
My, my name is Mary Clemmick. I'm from the Avonel section of Woodbridge Township. I also want to speak on this resolution 15-2186-R, the portion that concerns the $6 million to Woodbridge Township. I wasn't at the other meetings. I, I didn't see the written presentation. I wasn't at the meeting when you approved the grant. But as to, to give the money for an arts project in, at this moment to be included in next year's budget, is the Freeholder Board aware that at present, what's it, that's a 27-acre site that is very severely contaminated and the only thing that's happened there so far is they've knocked down the buildings and you see it's all bare land and you see some construction equipment and one trailer for Station Village at Avonel LLC and in the front gate is now kept locked and there's big signs, "No Trespassing, Dangerous, Hazardous Site", you know, "Under Environmental Remediation". That, that's the current state. I, I wanted to find out if it was appropriate to give this arts money at this point. I called the DEP two days ago and I was able to contact somebody who has access to the computers to find out just what's going on over there. So I want to give the information. What I was told is that only this past summer did the new owner, they're going under the name, as I said, Station Village at Avonel, LLC, which is owned by Atlantic Realty, also known as Middlesex Management or Best Rent New Jersey. Their plan is to put 500 apartments on the 27-acre site, which will be in three and four-story buildings built on concrete slabs and they have greatly reduced the amount of retail space. I think it's down to two storefronts near Avonel Street and the building that was the standalone community building in the original plan was 30,000 square feet, but in the plan that was accepted by the Woodbridge Township Planning Board, that's been reduced to 10,000 square feet. In the plan accepted by the Woodbridge Township Planning Board, it states that that building is to be used as a community center for residents of the Station Village and may occasionally be used by, for arts purposes. So one thing at the plan, I want to point out, there, there is no public parking. In the plan that the developer submitted, they, they actually have it written that they cannot provide adequate parking for the residents of the 500 apartments. So they're gonna open up the dead-end streets of Dartmouth and Vassar and they are relying on overflow parking into the residential area to supply the parking needs of the residents. When we had meetings at Avonel and were supposed to envision what people in Avonel community really wanted to see on that site, the number one thing that residents asked for was parking for the Avonel train station.
Ma'am, let me, excuse me for one moment, but let me just interject here because your, your portion of this, the meeting, the portion of this meeting is to discuss any resolutions listed and your comments are not necessarily in line with the resolution. The resolution is for the grant funds that are going to the municipality, the language, the responsibilities of the different municipalities they have to do to get those grant funds. And as far as the structure and the responsibility of, or how the structure or the project's gonna be completed has, has nothing to do with the grant fund agreements that we're voting on here tonight.
Oh, in the grant, if you give $1 million to Woodbridge Township in the year 2016, is, is, does it specify that that $1 million would be spent in 2016 on the Avonel arts project?
Let me try to answer that question. The, the agreement has provisions in it that provide accountability for the municipality in accordance with criteria that the county has adopted. There needs to be a proof of matching funds. There needs to be accounting of how monies are spent. There are other provisions that the, the freeholders adopted many months ago that go along with responsibility that the funds go to where they're intended, which is project-based, that it's, that it does provide for the matching funds and, and a general accounting and segregation of those funds. It does not provide that it has to be spent in the fiscal year. By its very nature, it could very well be that these funds would be held in a trust account until other funding is available and the project commences. But the, but the, the freeholders through the grant agreement don't micromanage the project themselves. All this provides for is accountability of the municipality to follow the criteria and that's something that the county staff will do as part of the provisions that are in that agreement. But we don't manage or develop, or we don't provide for design of the projects.
See, could I ju...
Thank you. Your time is up.
I just would like to say, I did speak to the DEP and from their...
Your time is up, ma'am.
Well, they had only...
There's another portion of the meeting that you're allowed to speak for five more minutes and you can say whatever you want.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak?
Motion to close the public portion?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Valente. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kelso?
I believe there may be some explanation.
Is anyone that has to vote, I believe, on any...
Yes, Freeholder Director.
Anyone else?
Director F. 2133.
Okay.
Yes, Freeholder Director. A motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 15-2126 through resolution 15-2231, excluding resolution 15-2215 to be voided and resolutions 15-2199 and 15-2133 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
And now Director, would it be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Freeholder Armwood, and that's fifteen dash twenty-one ninety-nine?
Is there a motion?
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Present, not voting.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
And now finally, Director, would it be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Freeholder Tamara, and that's Resolution fifteen dash twenty-one thirty-three?
Is there a motion?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Valente, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Tamara?
Present, not voting.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open a meeting up to the public. State your name for the record and address. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Charles Cradaville. Once again, I'm very disappointed in the Freeholder Board for rushing to spend that $18 million without listening to the public and what they had to say. I know you probably have a party to get to for your party leader and running mate, the former sheriff who just got out of jail today.
I take exception to your comments, Mr. Cradaville, because...
Please don't interrupt me, sir. If the clock is going to be running, you do not interrupt me, sir.
I'm not going to any party for any festivities. So just for the record.
Okay. Well, I am the editor of NewBrunswickToday.com, and I encourage people to check out that website and learn about what's going on in this county because it's very alarming. And I got to start by asking about these new civilian positions at the sheriff's office. Have those positions been created? Was I given correct information?
Those positions were created in order to move sheriff offices from surveillance room into the courthouse.
Okay, and the people have been hired?
That's right.
Okay, and can you tell me where the positions advertised?
Well, we, the sheriff, first of all, it's civil service positions, so these people are hired provisionally, which will trigger, should trigger a test, the civil service process. I'm trying to think of what the video they have this high of us, but as Kenny mentioned, to figure out the officer, the courthouse, and these civilians to do the videos.
Okay.
Watch the surveillance.
Okay, can you tell me the date those people started? Do you know offhand?
I'm looking for, was that...
It was the last meeting, so it was the first of December.
First of December. Okay. I got to get back to this issue with the Woodbridge project. Was there a committee? Is there an advisory committee to decide what to do with the Arts Trust Fund money?
Yes.
There is. Were they consulted about this project?
Yes.
Were they consulted before or after you approved the project?
They were consulted before.
Okay. And what did they have to say about it?
They supported it.
They support the Woodbridge project?
They supported it, yes.
And is there any organization that's going to run any type of arts programming there?
As part of the funding for the arts initiative, there's two components. One are the virtual facilities, those facilities where those programs can be run. There was a presentation at Monday's meeting by Kathy Shaw, Department Head of Business Development and Education, talked about the next steps and the programs and services that we're looking to provide throughout Middlesex County. As you're well aware, municipalities, along with the county, run numerous programs as it relates to the arts and culture and history, and our goal is to make sure we have a regional strategy to provide the best set of services throughout each of the municipalities and the facilities that exist and the facilities that we are either renovating and redeveloping to ensure that the opportunity for economic growth as it relates to the arts happens.
Okay. My next question is about fairness and justice. I, you know, today just learned that the person who's responsible for covering up water problems in New Brunswick, the water we all drink in this building and in this town, has been, has taken a plea deal, and he's looking at about three years in jail. And of course, the corrupt sheriff for 30 years, Joe Spicuzzo, was released today after doing just two years of a nine-year sentence for blatant corruption, for selling jobs in exchange for bribes. Do you think that that is fair? Do you think that when people are being locked up for nonviolent crimes for five, six, 10 years at a time, and corrupt, connected people are serving much shorter sentences, is that fair? Is that justice?
I don't set the statutes of penalties for people that commit crimes. So that's up to the judicial system to hand out, a judge hands out penalties for people, and that's it. It has nothing to do with us.
Okay, and the allegations against Sheriff Spicuzzo, the man was arrested in 2011, but those same allegations were printed on the front page of the Star Ledger, you know, 13 years earlier. How was this allowed to continue? How was a person who was openly and blatantly corrupt allowed to be the sheriff? And why did your organization, the Democrat Party, continue to run with him as running mates and make him your leader?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Not going to answer?
Next. Please state your name for the record, address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Mary Clemmick. I'm from the Avonel section of Woodbridge Township. I want to ask the Freeholders if they're aware that this particular site is 150 Avonel Street, Avonel, which was the, until, you know, they started knocking it down this year, 2015, the site of General Dynamics, which is notoriously known for polluting, leaving and polluting the sites with trichloroethylene. And if you're not aware of what the danger, on this particular site, there were 11 underground storage tanks containing trichloroethylene, which were leaking into the bedrock and the subsoil, and that, in 2004, to show you the severity of the contamination, that aspect, the New Jersey DEP and the administrator of the New Jersey Spill Compensation Fund hired the law firm of Alan Kaner from New Orleans to sue General Dynamics for failure to clean up the site in violation of the Hazardous Spill Act. Here's, I just brought the cover, but I could tell you could find this on the internet. All you have to do is put General Dynamics, Avonel, New Jersey. It'll come up, and you can read this lawsuit. And General Dynamics proposed natural attenuation, which means, in the lawsuit, it states that they started occupying the property in 1963. They never cleaned up a thing through all those years, and what's happened is, it was sold to a company that was set up by Victoria Classics, and under their own name for that site. And all Victoria Classics imports textiles from Europe, and all they wanted to do was use the warehouses to store their textiles, which people would sleep on that. And the DEP came in and said, no, they wouldn't allow them because it was too dangerous to store the textiles on the site, and they'd be contaminated from the fumes of the TCE. And the hazard, this housing built on TCE sites is well-known and well-documented, especially in California and other places in the United States. The research is extensive. That what's going to happen from this housing is cases, extremely high-level cases, it definitely causes cancer, and it causes cancer to people living on the site, even if they're living above a concrete slab, because the TCE fumes will go right through the concrete into every apartment and every inch of all the living space on that site. So this $6 million, what it causes is brain cancer, liver, and kidney cancer. It also causes an extremely high level of birth defects in any person who gets pregnant while living on that site, which is like, I'll tell you, it's really hard for me to say because, you know, I really want to shout it out and make people aware of how it's, when I told, when they said they were going to go through with this, I reached a high-level official, the EPA, and told him, and he knew what site, and he knew the level of contamination. And he laughed, and he said, no developer would be that stupid to face the liability of putting people living on that site, no matter what they, how they think they will clean it up. It will never be cleaned up to be safe for residential use. So what I found out from the DEP this week was they only submitted their remedial action work plan this summer. So I said, how could I see it? Could I go on the internet? How could I, how could I read what's in there? She said, well, we really can't put it on the internet because it's volumes and volumes long. So I said, well, how big? What are you talking about? She said, the first volume is 68 pages long. So I could go to Trenton and request to see it and see what's in there. And besides, the known contamination left behind, which was documented for years, was on the site from General Dynamics, trichloroethylene, which is also called TCE, and all of you could look that up and see how dangerous that is, and something called total xylanes, and that's what Alan Kaner was suing for in 2004. And Alan Kaner is such a prominent environmental lawyer that he, this law firm was the one that was hired by the federal government, the state of Louisiana, to handle the BP lawsuit, this company. So what I found out this week, by turning in those plans...
Tom.
It will take until the year 2022 to remediate the site. At that point, they have a environmental action work report, and then the DEP will decide what's allowed on the site.
Thank you. Next.
Jerry Riberti, Jersey Central Power and Light Company. Thank you, Freeholder Rios. Thank you to the entire governing body of Middlesex County allowing me to speak here tonight. There is a fact sheet, I don't know if they've been passed out yet, but these are available to you. It's about an investment that Jersey Central Power and Light is making in Middlesex County. I talked about this a couple of years ago. It took us a little bit longer to get the right-of-way agreements we needed from residents and from businesses. We are building a new 115 KV line along Route 33. It will serve customers in Manalapan, Millstone, Monroe, East Windsor, and Hightstown. It will serve 34,000 customers. It's going to improve the reliability and meet the growing need for electricity in that area. We've built the first third of the line. If you look at the first page, it tells you it's already built from our English Town Substation down to Route 33. In January, we're going to proceed with the construction down Route 33. We anticipate the line to be in service by June of 2016, and the entire project should be, have the construction completed by the fall of 2016. So I just want to tell you about the investments JC PNL is making in your county to help the residents with greater reliability of power.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great, great holiday.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Motion to pause above the portion?
Second.
Motion closed by Freeholder Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.